Okay, I did text Johani, let's see if she's able to get on here. All right, there she is. Thank you, Johani. We're going to start to commit the whole meeting with a discussion on dangerous intersections and we will turn it over to Chief Tonnelli to lead us through that discussion. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. I did send out summary report of the findings on the research we did into the intersections presented to council this afternoon. I know it was a little late, so you may not have had the time to review it. One thing I will note, if you are reading along in the report, where I mentioned intersections that are controlled by traffic control devices, stop signs and enters, uh, traffic lights. What I'm referring to is intersections that are completely controlled, so a four-way traffic light, a four-way stop sign. Every intersection in the city is somehow controlled by traffic control device, but a lot of them are, you know, a stop sign on a half-street where on the main street, there isn't a stop sign or a traffic light. So those areas where it's mentioned specifically, I mean, the summaries that, you know, this intersection has a high frequency of accidents for one that's controlled by traffic control devices. That's what I'm referring to is, uh, an intersection that is fully controlled in all directions.
Okay.
Before I get started, if anybody has any questions about any of the the locations in particular, I'd be happy to answer them and then depending on what council would like, I can run through the summary quickly. Or just answer specific questions.
Maybe Chief wanted to just step through the summary real quickly, in case everyone didn't have a chance to read through it. I'm looking at it now and then they can address any questions.
Absolutely. So just for the purpose of understanding where the data came from, I pulled information from our police reports that were generated between January 1st, 2020 and July 31st, 2021, as they related to vehicular accidents and pedestrian accidents. You'll see that there's a small summary about pedestrian crash data at the end of the report. I thought it was important to include because it does come into factor in some of these locations. So I just started off in the order that they were presented again, as I mentioned in the email this afternoon, there are some locations that aren't on here. For example, Route 10. It's a state highway. We know that the majority of the crashes along that road are the result of those intersections not being controlled. So vehicles pulling onto Route 10 from a side street and then getting involved in accidents because there are no controls all the way up Route 10, once you get, uh, leave 222 until you get all the way down to 724 and Conover Township. So there's no controls on traffic on Route 10. So some of the things that we would have to kick over to PennDOT to do studies on that were kind of those obvious situations I didn't include in this report, just in order to try to keep it as brief as possible. So one of the first intersections that we reviewed was Museum Road at East Y missing and OY missing. It's the, where the three roads converge there. Not a whole lot of crashes there during the reporting period, but some of the issues there are issues that are really tough for us to address and those are the line of sight issues with traffic coming down the hill towards the city, which really prevents us from doing any kind of traffic controls there on Museum Road, because we couldn't put a traffic stop sign at the bottom of the hill where cars coming up over the hill wouldn't be able to see traffic stopped. So again, those are areas where we may look at doing some additional enforcement where we know that we can't do anything to alleviate the traffic problems. Uh, one of the more significant areas over in District 1 where we saw a large number of crashes on Kenthurst Boulevard, 27 crashes along that roadway during the reporting period, four of those were injury accidents. And again, these are all intersections that aren't fully controlled. So Kenthurst Boulevard, again, from where you come off of Museum Road at the traffic light isn't controlled again until you get to Lancaster Avenue. So long open roadway, we do see some speeding there. And we do see issues with vehicles pulling out from the stop signs without making sure there's proper clearance. Again, some of the things that we see the same issues on Lancaster Avenue are crashes that are the result of speeding and lack of controls in some areas. One of the things that I would like to see is if we're going to kick something to PennDOT Lancaster Avenue, maybe one of those locations just for checking on the traffic timing. I know sometimes the traffic signals get changed. If we're directing traffic, moving traffic along, sometimes the traffic flows change, increase or decrease. So I know once they did a traffic study down at Lancaster Avenue and Route 10, when the firehouse was built there, that really disrupted some of the traffic flow based on the study that they did. So there may be some adjustments needed. Because what we see a lot of those accidents on Lancaster Avenue, there's a lot of rear-ending accidents from vehicles getting stuck in traffic. And again, one thing to note, when you look at these intersections that are fully controlled by traffic signals is that it looks as if a lot of these intersections shouldn't have a large number of crashes. They're controlled by traffic signals, but we see individuals who are trying to beat traffic lights getting caught up in crashes frequently at those locations. So while traffic control devices like stop signs and traffic signals can help us, they also have the potential to hurt us in those situations. Moving on to Laurel Street, again, what we noticed there is really interesting is that the majority of the crashes are at controlled intersections, so fully controlled by four-way stop signs or traffic signals. So again, it's either individuals who are jumping the traffic signals kind of rolling through the stop signs. And we also did note that there's a lot of line of sight issues at the half-streets down there, like Minor Street and Pearl Street with traffic parked along Laurel Street. And you'll see this is a common theme as we move through this report, is that a lot of these issues have to do with illegal parking at intersections that are disrupting line of sight. There was a number of intersections along Perkyomen Avenue and Mineral Spring Road that were brought up in the report from council. So what I really did was took a look at that whole area in general and found that, again, controlled intersections, for the most part, is where we saw a lot of our crashes. But those large intersections like Perkyomen Avenue, Hill and Franklin, where you have a convergence of multiple roadways, Mineral Spring, Climber and Spruce, 11th Perk and Penn, where there's a lot of different traffic patterns, converging on one location is where we saw a large number of crashes. I mean, over the reporting period, we saw 30 crashes at those three locations, which is pretty high. So again, those are some areas that we are, we're going to look at doing some additional enforcement and those are some areas where, as I mentioned in the email, we may do some additional surveys with some equipment that we just obtained this year that'll help us with some traffic counts and speed analysis at those locations. A Street, so A Street, Spring to Walnut Street, this is the drag racing strip in the Northeast. Again, another issue here is traffic southbound on A Street is only impeded by one traffic signal only between Spring and Walnut. So you have a large stretch of open roadway where we see a lot of speeding issues. Very significant area in our reporting for crashes. There was 82 vehicle crashes along that length of roadway during the reporting period, which is significantly higher than anywhere else in the city. None of those were injury accidents and 73 were non-injuries. But again, a lot of this comes down to, again, those poor sightlines and speeding as a combination of factors. This is another area where we should probably look at doing a formal traffic study in order to determine what kind of improvements we can make in the physical conditions on that roadway to prevent these crashes, because that is a very, very high number for us to see, just a few block area. Uh, I took all of the north, other northeast, north-south streets that were mentioned in the report, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th and 13th from Walnut to Spring and grouped them together, because they're all very similar in the fact that there's a very high volume of traffic. You hit any of those roadways pretty much any time of day, except for the late overnight hours. There's a very high volume of traffic, it's very densely populated, so there's a lot of parking issues in those neighborhoods. We're seeing a lot of parking violations. Most of these areas that were in the study, I went out and drove just to get an idea of what we were dealing with. And these are probably some of the most significant areas where those sightlines cause a lot of issues for folks pulling out those four-way stop signs. And again, we do see stop sign violations that those those controlled intersections that are contributing to these accidents. For those streets, I mean, really, that comes down to an enforcement issue. I don't know that there's a whole lot that we can do in terms of changing the physical characteristics of those roadways or putting more controls in that will help us out there. The other issue in those neighborhoods is, in addition to high volume of traffic, we also have a lot of schools in those areas. So you have it times that kids are coming to school or dismissal time, even a higher volume of traffic, double parking, all kinds of crazy parking going on. One of the long-term goals of our traffic unit is to create traffic plans for every school in the city so that we can better control parking and traffic flow around the schools. Hampton Boulevard, I mean, there's not really much I can say about Hampton Boulevard. Linda can tell you the complaints that she receives and strat receives up there. It's speeding. It is a open roadway with no controls on it. Really, unless we're out there doing enforcement every day, the only other thing that we can do is look at some of those physical roadway changes, putting in a large median in the middle or some other traffic control devices that will help us there. Because again, we see a lot of the crashes on Hampton Boulevard are more serious because of the speeds involved. Schuylkill Avenue, I kind of broke this down into a couple of different areas. Schuylkill Avenue at West Windsor, West Douglas and Mercer. There are parking issues and stop sign violations is what we noted are the main contributing factors to crashes of those locations. So again, pretty much what we saw up in the Northeast, vehicles parked up in intersections make it very difficult for individuals to see to pull out on Schuylkill Avenue, no controls on Schuylkill Avenue. Some of those intersections create the traffic crashes that we're seeing. Here's another one, it's kind of anomaly that we wouldn't think we'd see a lot of crashes, Schuylkill Avenue in Lackawanna. It has the highest incidence of crashes along Schuylkill Avenue. That intersection is fully controlled. It even has left turn signals. Again, I think a lot of that is just folks that are trying to beat the traffic lights, return, make a right turn on the red when traffic's flowing in a different direction that are causing to those. So again, not much else we can do there other than increase enforcement in that area. One of the intersections, I think that Donna noted in her report was Schuylkill Avenue and Avenue B. You can actually turn left off of Avenue B on the Schuylkill Avenue, which is very dangerous. And while we only see three crashes there, if you page back to the last page where we talk about pedestrian crashes, there's a large number of individuals struck by vehicles in that area of Schuylkill Avenue. And a lot of that, we believe, is attributed to folks that are leaving the Glen Side homes going across Schuylkill Avenue to businesses there. So preventing that left-hand turn may eliminate a handful of crashes, vehicle crashes a year, but it will make it much safer for individuals who are crossing Schuylkill Avenue to go about their business. Another area was around Riverside Elementary School, Front Street and Amity Street, Center and Pike. A lot of the, lot of traffic issues on Center Avenue when school is coming in and out. But again, another roadway that has a lot, lack of controls for the length of the roadway on Center Avenue. So we see a lot of speeding in those areas and also on Front Street. There's not a whole lot of controls along Front Street out in that area, so we see cars speeding. Again, maybe dropping a four-way stop sign at front and Amity, fully controlling that intersection will alleviate some of those problems. And again, you know, getting out there during the time that we look at school drop-off and dismissal to look at the traffic and speed enforcement, it would be helpful. This is another area where we're going to look at doing one of our traffics, traffic surveys with some of the new equipment we just got to try to determine what speeds and traffic flow looks like there. North 6 and Amity, North 6 and Pike were on a report. I'd also look at the larger area there, North 6 from Robeson to Amity. There was 20 crashes in the reporting period there. So another area where there's a pretty decent number of incidents. And that's all the same thing, is you have a lot of lack of controls on North 6th Street, so cars start moving pretty fast there. Marry that up with the issues with poor sightlines caused by the parking into intersections, and we have the problems we do. So again, I don't know if there's something we want to look at in terms of putting more controls on 6th Street, and it creates some traffic flow problems going up through. But that may be another area to look at traffic studies. Second and Buttonwood, Second and Buttonwood, we only saw two non-injury crashes in that intersection, but there is a large volume of pedestrian traffic. Every time I've driven through there, I've seen it. So that is something we may, some simple things such as putting up those pedestrian signs in the roadway. Not only do they alert drivers to their attention that there may be pedestrians in the area, but just something that physically appears to restrict the width of the roadway tends to slow cars down. And we see that all the time. It's one of the reasons why there is a suggestion of widening or putting wide traffic islands along Hampton Boulevard. It's just that the physical narrowing of the roadway tends to cause folks to drive a little bit slower. So something we may want to look at, there is just simply some signage in the roadway, alerting folks of pedestrian traffic in the area. Three intersections on North 5th Street were noted, Ole Douglas and Spring. You can see that the intersections that are not fully controlled, so Ole and Douglas, there's more serious crashes there. You know, as you look at Spring Street, there's a higher number there because there's 13 and that intersection is fully controlled. But we're seeing slower speed accidents there. Again, folks turning out in front of other cars or trying to get to the traffic light. What we're seeing in Ole and Douglas is you have two intersections back to back, so between Windsor and Greenwich that aren't controlled. So we're seeing higher speeds on 5th Street during the, in those two blocks of Ole and Douglas, which is why you see there's four injury accidents within that period. So again, you know, 5th Street's a state highway. Do we want to get into looking at a traffic study to put traffic signals there or not? I mean, that's a a conversation for the administration, Public Works and Council to have at a later date. I'm just kind of presenting the data and the results of that here. Fourth and Cherry Street, we are doing a formal traffic study there. Stan, Ruggis is assisting us with Public Works and an outside contractor to do a traffic study there. There's been a lot of serious crashes there. We've seen four injury, 15 non-injury crashes in that intersection. Simply a lack of traffic control on 4th Street is what's causing that. And I'm going to bring up another intersection here that's kind of in the same neighborhood, just to point to how the lack of full controls affects crashes. We saw 19 in this intersection, four of them resulted in injuries, and some of them were pretty serious. Go a couple of blocks away to Third and Penn Street is, besides Lancaster Avenue, the bypass, Third and Penn has the highest number of crashes in the entire city. There was 43 vehicle crashes in that intersection during this reporting period. None of them resulted in injuries. Because again, we're seeing a traffic that is, and intersections controlled by traffic devices in all four directions. So we're seeing slower speed accidents there. So this Fourth and Cherry, kind of putting two, two locations in the same neighborhood together is a pretty serious area. When we're looking at traffic crashes, and again, you have the parking garage right there, there's a large volume of traffic coming out on the Cherry Street and attempting to cross Fourth to get up to Third. So it's definitely an area that we really need to look at, and I thank Stan for his assistance with this. Looking into some options there. Six and Franklin was mentioned, but again, I looked at Franklin Street as a whole. Franklin Street intersection is typically, we noted in our report, average one, less than one crash per month. So the whole length of Franklin Street, we don't see a lot. And again, a lot of Franklin Street is fully controlled, so you have either a three-way or a four-way intersection that's controlled by traffic signals or stop signs. And a lot of the other crashes we see are at those half-streets that aren't fully controlled. So there's a brief summary there that we see, you know, most of the vehicle crashes in the city occur in intersections with traffic control devices. So when I'm saying that, I'm saying fully controlled, which is surprising that the bulk of our crashes are in those intersections, but I mean, you can kind of see how folks drive when you're out there on the roadways and see why that is potentially a problem. And the largest things we're seeing is, you know, speeding, the sightlines being disrupted by parking and just disregard for traffic control devices, the stop signs and speed limits. That data, just to give you an idea, we come through in the reporting period again, is from January 1st, 2020 through the end of July, 2021. The Reading Police Department received reports for 5,425 vehicle crashes in the city of Reading. So 4,000 or 5,425 vehicle crashes reported in that little over a year and a half period. So we comb through all that data as related to these specific incidents in order to come up with the summary report that you see today. I looked at pedestrian crashes separately because there's a lot of different factors that go into them. You know, we have pedestrians crossing all parts of the street, not just at intersections, so they're crossing mid-blocks and things like that. I was actually surprised, pleasantly surprised that we only had 136 pedestrian crashes in the city during that reporting period. I thought it would be much higher, just from my experience being on the street and taking a number of them throughout the year. 136 is 136 too many, but we looked at where the highest concentrations of those were. Again, I was kind of surprised by this. I was thinking probably around schools or parks, we would see a lot of them, because a lot of times we see kids, you know, run out between cars, across the street and are struck. And surprisingly, the majority of them, 13, over 13%, were along Penn Street. But again, maybe not so surprising that some of the highest concentrations of pedestrian traffic in the city are down on Penn Street, but there are a lot of traffic controls. A lot of those intersections actually have timed pedestrian traffic periods, so that the traffic signals are read in all directions, that pedestrians can cross the street. Again, I mentioned the Glen Side area, again, as being another area, we saw a higher concentration. There was five reported there, which is again, where we see some blocks have, most of the blocks in the city have zero, five in a small area is pretty significant. And again, something I think is good to note is that we had no concentrations around any of the schools, and I think a lot of things come into play there. The school zones or the speed zones at the schools help us. I think just traffic congestion, when there's a hot, high volume of kids coming, going from the schools helps us out because traffic isn't moving as fastly when it's kind of gridlocked. And the other thing is we have crossing guards, a lot of those areas, those crossing guards really help out to make sure that these kids are getting across the street safely to school. So I think we can improve on that with these traffic plans we're looking at in the long term. But that is pretty much a summary of everything. If there are some that I didn't cover, again, some of them were specific problems that the police department wasn't able to address or issues, like I said in the beginning, like Route 10. Route 10, uncontrolled, the whole length of it, cars pulling out from the side streets are getting involved in crashes there. It's a state highway, so unless we toss something to PennDOT, there's not a lot we as the police department or Public Works and some of their subcontractors can do.
All right. Well, Chief, thank you for the report. Council members, we obviously can't get into every intersection. You can certainly follow up with the chief with any kind of detailed questions or concerns. If there are some comments regarding the report on a broad base basis, I think that would be a good, good approach at this time. Go ahead, Donna.
First of all, thank you, Chief. I think that was a really well-done report, and I think it helps us all understand some of the dynamics in our, our different streets and intersections in our districts. Two quick questions for you. I'll make one quick comment. One of the factors in my district that you mentioned is very helpful because we have a zoning issue coming up, and that will be helpful. And in argument, I have the argument for zoning issue, and it's concrete here. And also, my other question is, and I'm glad to see that things seem better around the schools, but if you look at the time that all this data was collected, the schools were closed a big part of that time. So I don't know if that skews what would be normal, you know, normal data or normal occurrences. Because again, with COVID, schools were closed during a significant part of that reporting period.
Yeah, I did look outside of the reporting period for, just to continue a comparison of some of that pedestrian data for Reading High, the Central Middle School and Riverside, because they're the areas where we see the most complaints and the most highest concentration. And we really didn't see any of that during that period of time, too, during 2019. I didn't do it for the full survey that you see here, but for those three schools, we did look at 2019 data and we saw the similar things, because again, yeah, there wasn't a lot of pedestrian traffic or school traffic in 2020.
Right. Just one other quick question, and I'll be done. Schuylkill Avenue and Avenue B. Does it make, would it be more problematic? Does it make sense to prohibit any kind of left-hand turn there? Because Avenue A and Avenue B are the only points of entrance and egress from the Glen Side home. It seems, you know, it seems to be a challenge looking at those particular, that particular intersection of Avenue B and Glen's and Schuylkill Avenue.
It does, because Avenue B is the only real exit from Glen Side, because Avenue A is, is one way going into Glen Side Housing. So it would create a problem in the fact that all the traffic would have to turn right, so it's going to have to go somewhere to turn around to come back southbound into the city, which is why I don't think that the left turns were prohibited there before, but from what we're seeing, there, there's some compelling argument as to why we should do that. The other thing that I also didn't do in the report is, there is the northbound Schuylkill Avenue turning left onto Columbia, where that left-hand turn is prohibited because of the, the rise in the hill there. That's another area of enforcement that I think we need to look at, because I think that contributes to some of those crashes farther along.
Yeah, I get a lot of concerns about that intersection. So you're right, Chief. And again, thank you for this report. It's much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and I think the chief has noted that, you know, speeding, illegal parking, and then some of these control enforcement, primary issues that we're seeing this number of accidents in a city with such density and a lot of speeding vehicles, it doesn't surprise me. So again, I know there's intersections people want to talk about, and we can do that offline with the chief if, if need be. Are there comments relevant to the overall report? Arthur's an intersection. Lucina, I actually see your hand. Wow, I saw a hand. Look at that.
That's great. You saw the sign. Thank you, Jeff. My apologies for coming a little bit late. And Chief, I'm certainly going to connect with you about District 1's specific areas, but 5,425 traffic crashes in a year and a half. Is that, how does that measure for other cities or size? Is that, where does that really put us? Do you have the answer to that?
I don't know specifically. It's something we can look into, we can do some comparison, like with cities of similar size. We have a really unique situation here in the city because of the way the bypasses are. We see a lot of crashes on the bypass. I mean, I used to work District 7, which is Council District 1, Lancaster Avenue, the bypass, I think I was there every day for some kind of crash. So we see a significant number of crashes on our highways. We also see them on the surface streets in the city. And again, like North A Street with I was, I knew there was a large number of crashes there. I never thought we would see in a a short run of roadway, there'd be 82 traffic crashes on A Street between Spring and Walnut. That's, and that's not counting the intersections of Spring and Walnut Street. That's just the, the length of roadway between them. So I would eventually guess that we're probably pretty high, but that's just kind of a quick assessment in my head based on what I'm seeing with data.
Okay. Two more questions. So, you know, I, I know that there's a big difference between saying, all right, we've evaluated and we recommend a formal traffic study, right? That's one end of the spectrum. I'm wondering if on the other end, you know, we've, you've noted areas of concern. And, you know, could that be addressed with some kind of safety campaign? You know, have you participated in something like that before? Does that come through the police department, you know, in terms of like blatant disregard to, you know, traffic rules or, or people jaywalking directly across Penn Street and over the barriers? Because, because we, I've seen all of that happen. You know, how, how do you do something like that? Or what, what advice do you have on, on how we can do some kind of public safety campaign to just remediate the blatant disregard to the safety measures and traffic measures that we're not seeing both by vehicles and pedestrians?
Yeah, I think it's definitely something we need to do. We need to get out there more on the education piece or reminding folks about, you know, the proper driving, proper ways to cross the street and things like that. The other thing is, our traffic unit has been, being awarded a large amount of grants from the state to do enforcement. And one of the, the grants that they used was for pedestrian enforcement on Penn Street, and they spent a lot of time down there. They didn't issue a ton of tickets for folks jaywalking. They didn't issue a, a ton of tickets for folks jaywalking and things like that, but it was, you know, getting out and, and having some interaction with folks down on Penn Street and having discussions of what's safe or not. And they certainly did issue a large number of citations for folks who were disregarding vehicles, that were disregarding the pedestrian crossing signals and traffic signals down there. So I think it's a combination of both, more enforcement. Again, a, a lot of our resources are diverted to, you know, combating violent crime. You know, we live and have our resources, we have to prioritize things. But this is one of the things that we're looking at more so. And how can we better utilize our traffic unit to get out there and do some of these things? Again, they got some pretty high-speed equipment delivered over the summer. It's one of those big traffic signs, you'll see it out and about in the city that not only we can put messaging on, but it also will, we can use it to do some informal speed and traffic volume studies. So there's a couple of places we're going to do that coming up in the near future.
Okay, and I see, you know, our, our ability, or at least just from my perspective, you know, we can really be as council members, boots on the ground in our districts to help, you know, the traffic unit in the extent that it's appropriate on that education and outreach. So, you know, please don't hesitate to reach out where, where we can be effective in our community meetings and just reminding people through social media, you know, whatever it is, pedestrian crossing and such. My last question is, you referred to Route ten, you know, and, and that being a state highway. You kind of alluded to, well, that's really not in our hands, but you know, how could, you know, I help? You know, how could we help in our council seat or, you know, as the city to support you, to reach out, you know, to locations like that so that we're not just washing our hands clean? You know, clearly there's a problem. How do we advocate together for something like that and draw the state's attention?
I think a lot of it is just that communication with Penn Dot. I know Stan handles a lot of that when it comes to these traffic studies. Because there's a lot that goes into them. And I know we've looked at Route ten before, we looked at two twenty-two, the interchange down there. And there is so much traffic flow there that we're hearing is that there's a really difficult time to put a traffic signals in there. I know one place we looked at years ago was Morgantown Road and Upland Avenue. That intersection, from the information I was provided at the time, I don't know how true that is or was then or is now, is that it was in too close proximity to two twenty-two and seven twenty-four to put those controls in because of the volume on the roadway, because of traffic backing up. So I don't know if it's maybe something we can look at again, has traffic flow improved, gotten worse? I don't know. That stuff is way out of my league when it comes to those types of surveys. I can review data and reports and kind of come up with recommendations from what I see, but that's definitely some kind of engineering work that needs to be done there.
Well, and I see Stan has his hand up, so I'm probably like, he's the expert, I'm not, but I can tell you on a non-expert opinion, it's gotten worse. It's horrendous. Anybody can tell you that it's absolutely a nightmare. And, you know, we can keep bringing to the table suggestions from the past and solutions that haven't worked, but we have to work together to figure something out. Stan, what, what do you have to add to, to that piece of conversation there?
If I may, thank you for the compliment, but I'm not an expert. I work with some wonderful people. And then with Penn Dot along with Chief and everyone else. But if I may, regarding that intersection, which is Lancaster Route ten, Penn Dot is under design right now to widen to six lanes, the highway, and to do a lot of work to that specific bridge. And I can tell you that this intersection, it's very much impeded by the water flows, number one. Number two, as you travel further south, Penda just did major paving work and with them knowing they're going to spend quite a few millions of dollars, I don't think they are ready now to even undertake a traffic study to put even some type of more passive traffic controls and once we would, I would love to see something closer, especially at the bottom of the hill of, of Route ten. There's a lot of accidents there. I, I see one probably one every other week. But I, I will follow up with administration and I, I can contact Penn Dot on those simple ideas. But I can just forewarn you, it's, we're probably not going to have it into the drawing board. But that's, that's the worst case, but I will follow up.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Again, I want to try to stay away from specific intersections only because we, we do have a busy agenda this evening. You were next, and then we'll see if anybody else. Go ahead, Stratt.
Listen, what kind of reports you getting from on the thirteenth and northeast July? I heard you mention the schools and that. I've been paying a close watch and today it really irked me when I was coming in here. School was letting out these people that are picking up and dropping off students, and I don't mean parents, I'm talking about employees with those yellow trucks. They don't pull in, they double park in front of the school. What makes it impossible to go south on thirteenth street. Okay, because on the other side of the street, people are picking up over there and it's getting worse. And I see the teachers running on trying to do traffic out there. Don't we have anybody that can at least check the schools? I know we don't have enough personnel to get around to everything, but I don't want to see some kid get hit. And that's what's going to happen here. Those people that are picking up and dropping off students are making a very dangerous situation. And this is just parents, it's the people that are employed, that employ with those trucks, the vehicles.
The schools that we noted, there's some pretty serious traffic issues with, and actually it was a school that we had a meeting with Dr. Sanchez from Reading School District the other week. It was one of the, the schools that he had some concerns about as well. So it is one of the ones that's on our priority list to address in our, our traffic unit. With that, it was that and I believe Riverside were the two top priorities that we're looking at right now.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah, go ahead, Marcia.
Okay, and I want to thank the chief for such a thorough study because the best decisions we make are according to data. And also, I believe the police department's doing what it needs to do. I want to circle back to something Lucine said, because what I've noted is just a blatant disregard for the rules that protect people. And by that, I mean the speeding, the U-turning that I'm seeing more and more that's occurring in the middle of the city streets, even though I believe that's legal. It's done without any regard to pedestrians, people walking in the middle of intersections. What you say about Penn Street, I see now that I've been driving into work every day. So that I think that we really need to do some type of comprehensive education campaign for people to understand how they're putting their lives at risk and are putting our young people's lives at risk. And just to be able to look, I also have noted too, that people seem to be getting involved in car crashes, probably getting the money from the insurance company and the cars aren't being fixed. That's nothing we have any control over, but just something I've noticed more and more is considerable number of damaged cars parked and a lot of times parked illegally in city streets. So it really, we're going to have our work cut out for us and I'm hoping that the mayor can help us take the lead because he, of course, can communicate to those folks. They listen to what he has to say. So I think it really is comprehensive that we all have a voice, but I'd like to be able to see some leadership coming from the mayor's office. Thanks.
All right, are there any additional comments relevant to this matter? Go ahead, Donna.
One quick thing, as you guys know, I said, as cities representative, the Rats Board and Stan, I know you're in the technical committee. He alluded to the fact that the, obviously there will be a major podcast rehabilitation, renovation, at least a seven hundred million dollar project, if not more. However, everything again has been pushed back because of the concentration on the interstates in Pennsylvania. I think it's unlikely we'll see any action, even design for the bypass before twenty twenty-seven. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't, if I was a vetting person, I wouldn't see the reconstruction happening until the early twenty thirties. If that, everything has been pushed back because priority has been made to concentrate on concentrating on states like I eighty-one, I seventy-eight, all those. So it's not good news, Lucine, especially for that intersection at, at Route ten and four twenty-two. But again, everything has just been pushed back by the state because of the concentration on the interstates. And I know locals are lobbying for that to be changed, but right now, there doesn't seem to be movement that I've been able to see through our Rats update. Stan, if you have anything else you may, you may know more than I do, being more technical.
I want to reel this in a little bit. If Stan has a brief update, that'd be great, and then we're going to move on, guys.
And this just impacts the intersection, Lucine was.
I really don't have any updates other than understanding what we're doing. And there are, it's a very fluid dynamic with Penn Dot. And with the liquid fuel funds being under conversation now, how, how, how roadway reconstruction is being funded? We shall see. There's just so much more. It's a very complicated logistics nightmare, to be honest. And what we would like to see probably is not, and it may even be approved, but may, may change in a matter of a, a minute. Wish I could, wish I could be of better service, just can't apologize. But I can say we do have a very good working relationship with Penn Dot and the county. Alan works tremendously with Tim, so we are, we are at the forefront.
All right, thank you, Stan. Any other quick comments before we move forward this evening? All right, if not, thank you, Chief, for the report. I'm sure there'll be some follow-up questions. And I know the intent is to try to do as much enforcement as we can, as well as some of the other ideas that were expressed here this evening. Council, we have to move along here. We're going to go on to the next topic and that's the city council solicitor. What I'm going to do is read through kind of the guidelines that we established in the selection of the solicitor. And then we'll just put a little framework around what that looks like and then we'll talk about the, the compensation structure. The council solicitor will perform professional legal services for a city council. The primary responsibility position is to advise us on questions of the law and assist with legislative matters. Legal matters will be referred to the council solicitor by members of council or the city clerk. And we, we talked about that last, the last time, you know, if it's a big issue, we want to make sure we have a majority of the body that's willing to do that. If it's an inquiry, if, if a council member has a question, it's going to be answered in fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes, whatever. That doesn't require extensive research, that, that won't require a majority. The position does not replace or usurp the city solicitor and his role or her role as the city's chief legal advisor and representative. The specific duties of the city council solicitor provide legal services or assistance when requested at city council meetings or hearings, where city council as a body are exercising legislative, adjudicative and quasi-judicial functions, including, but not limited to conditional use hearings. Provide legal services or assistance when requested at regular, special and or committee meetings of city council. Provide legal services when requested at executive sessions. Linda, I couldn't remember, was the intent to have a city council solicitor at all city council regular business meetings?
No, it was not.
It was not, only if as requested, okay.
Correct.
Next, legal research and opinions. Conduct legal research and prepare legal opinions on all matters of law as requested by members of council or the city clerk from time to time. And again, this, an extensive opinion is going to require, you know, four members agreeing that it's something we want to pursue, whether we did that formally via resolution or four members discussed it, made everyone else aware of it. We agreed that there's four members and then we move it forward and we will put some guidelines around that. The council solicitor shall forward a copy of all written opinions, hard copy and email to the city solicitor unless the opinion involves a matter of conflict with the administration or is an otherwise confidential or privileged matter. A copy of written legal opinions requested by a member of council shall be forwarded to the president of council, each of the members of city council and the city clerk unless a member of council requests confidentiality as to the opinion, at which time the communication will be subject to attorney-client privilege. Now again, if there's going to be an extensive issue that's going to require, I, I guess we should use the hour as a guideline of time. We're going to have to agree on it as a body and, and figure it out from there. And I'm sure there's going to be a trying era or time along the way that we have to really dive into that. But this, we're not going to spell this thing out perfectly out of the gate. We have to have some general guidelines and build upon them. All right, in general matters, when requested by council, the council solicitor shall review resolutions, leases, contracts, agreements, bond obligations and other documents upon which council action will be required and shall consult and discuss with the city solicitor all issues related there too. This will not be every resolution and every ordinance. These will be, you know, specific ones where we feel added eyes would be necessary. You know, that's wide open contracts, et cetera. So anytime the body feels we want to get a deeper look, we'll have the ability to do that. The council solicitor shall prepare ordinances as directed by the president of council or a majority of members and reviews proposed ordinances prepared by the city clerk or administration and in pride and provide input or clarifications as required. And again, that's on an as requested basis, correct, Linda?
Yes.
Give advice on legal matters, including citizens' legal inquiries to members of city council or city clerk when requested or as necessary. Administration matters, city solicitor, consult with the city solicitor on legal matters when either requested by the city solicitor with approval of majority of council. And, and that's going to require, I'm going to clarify that, a majority of council. Unless there's something really controversial, I don't think it's going to be a problem. But if they come to me with a request, if I feel it's something that the body will easily approve, I'd just give them a green light. But if it's something that's concerned, I will pull the body and say, are you okay with this? The council solicitor shall be available to administration of the offices, cities, listener for the following purposes. Consultation concerning pending or threatening litigation involving the city or ordinances or resolution of the city.
Narrow some detail.
Consultation concerning the drafting of proposed city ordinances, consultation regarding any other matters relating to city business at the request of the city solicitor as directed by the president of council, majority of council members. To represent the city or the city department to the city solicitor and assistants that have a conflict of interest, subject to the approval of the body. Consultation concerning miscellaneous legal issues related to matters that may require future council action. And again, this whole section is really to strengthen the city's legal position overall, allowing access to the city council solicitor as an added advisor to the, to the city's legal staff. Number three, the council solicitor shall be available to the city clerk for the purpose of consultation and advice of issues related to the duties of clerk and council business, provide primary legal advice and assistance to council matters where a conflict or dispute with the administration exists or is likely to occur. All right, we, we spelled out all the, all the qualifications, that was already done. And then before we get into the compensation, we'll open it up for questions on these duties. Because one thing I want to make sure everyone is clear on is that, you know, anything over an hour of the solicitor's time, under an hour of the solicitor's time, if you feel it's going to be a quick question about something in your district or if you have, you know, a general question about city business or you need input, you have the ability to go and request that information from the council solicitor. And I would ask as people, unless there's something of confidentiality involved, that we share that with the other members just so in case somebody has that question that's similar. You know, we can get the information. I don't expect a lot of that activity to go on. I would, I would expect that, you know, we'll have the solicitor in front of us often enough, either personally or on the phone, and we can ask those questions in person. For big legal matters, if somebody wants to, you know, investigate something, it's going to require a majority. Anytime we're going to be using more than an hour of the council solicitor's time, we have to have a majority of the body on board, so we're not all going all over the place, right, you know, racking up costs, et cetera. Questions or comments on these directives as they stand, and again, this thing is going to be formulated as we go. I'm sure we're going to try to put this in a kind of a procedures manual. We can even, we can even legalize it by ordinance or resolution, Linda, we can talk about that. But I want to make sure we all understand kind of our starting point with the council solicitor. Once we're done with that, we'll go to the compensation piece. I don't know whose hand was up first, Johani's or Lucine's, but we'll start with Johani and then we'll go to Lucy.
You already mentioned that you say we'll get into the compensation part next. That's, that was my question. Have we decided? I don't figure.
Okay, go ahead, Lucy. Okay, go ahead, Lucy.
Okay, two questions. What, with the directives that we've just outlined. And maybe this is a friend question. How does it differ from what the charter already allows and presents?
Well, the charter's unfortunately absent on a city council solicitor. So we're just trying to establish some at a gate. Well, we have it. I mean, we now that we can appoint one, but I don't think it has the details on the operance. You know, the actual use and implementation of a city council solicitor is new. So.
I think by, by name, but, but not by action. You know, so I, I think that the referendum has brought to the ability for us to by name identify. An individual as a city council solicitor, but the charter. You know, in the past, prior to the referendum, has always given the ability to council body to bring in or call on. A solicitor as needed. At least that's my interpretation. So I just want to make sure that. You know, the directives are outlining the, the specificities that, you know, as they pertain to the referendum.
Yeah, I believe we're lining up. As closely to the referendum as we can. You know, there was a lot of open ended questions in that referendum. I think the intent was for us to have a city council. Solicitor and now, now that we are on the verge of hiring one. We're trying to get out of the gate kind of in the healthiest manner as we can. I don't think there's a lot of legal challenges to our structure. I think we're meeting all the. The legal operance and I would defer to Fred if he feels we're out of scope at all, but I think. As it relates to the expectations of the referendum and the wording of the charter, Fred, do you think we're meeting the needs?
I, I think this is, this comes very closely. The one thing. And you're, you're both, you're correct, Jeff, that there isn't like a, this is what the. Council solicitor shall do type of structure in the charter. It's very open ended. And I think I, that's what I said from the outset is. You, that council may by ordinance pass a. Something similar to what's attached to the agenda here. That sets, this is what the council solicitor shall do and it can be broad, but as, and flexible. The one thing I would add though is, I think you'd mentioned not having them present at regular meetings and, and council meetings. That, the problem I have with that is, you know, I, I'll still be at the meetings, but. They need to advise you. So it's very hard. What you're going to start hearing from me once someone's named is. You really need to talk to your solicitor or, and preferably that person will be in the room or on the Zoom or wherever. So that it won't be a delay. So I would strongly, think about this, like an executive session. You're going to want your solicitor there. I'm not going to be comfortable going into an executive session. If your solicitor isn't in the room with us, if that makes sense. So I, I, I think. You know, my communications, I'll be copying the council solicitor on everything that goes to council. As a body, as individual members or to the clerk's office. But.
And I'm not opposed to them being at our, at least our regular business meetings.
Right.
And in our executive sessions when we know. So that's certainly something we, we can employ.
And, and the reason I say that is because most of the questions that do come up, not all questions, but a lot of them are really, would be for the council solicitor. I mean, they're. They would be advising you on how to run your meetings when the kind of. Unexpected questions that come up and they're, they're, they're few and far between.
But the thing we want to be careful with is that the city solicitor is still the.
Oh, yeah.
The chief legal advisor of the city. And when we run across. Critical path issues that impact the city, including our actions, we have to go with your guidance. So.
Yes, and I'm not, I'm not. Deferring, delegating, or I, I'm, I'm, what I'm envisioning is much more of a collaborative effort where. Like I said, we would both be in the kind of the room together so that no one's, first of all, accusing me of, of advising a, a body that has. Independent counsel of, you know, without that. Without their counsel in the room with them, that, you know, that's an ethical issue that, you know, really could become a problem for me as an attorney. And I think it's important for, for you guys, and I don't think it's that different from what's being proposed. I'm just pointing that out that that's. I think the important thing is to understand that you now have an attorney. Who represents your guys' interests and your guys' interests a lot of times are exactly aligned with mine. And most of the time I, what I'm advising to the, to the city is still going to be aligned with what. You're doing, but there will be times for, for conflict and we'll, you know, deal with those, but I think in general. I, I would just consider that, that the. The council solicitor should. You know, be, to add those two things that they should be present at meetings. And also that they should be, you know, copied on all communications with the, with the city solicitor. Whether there's a conflict or not, I think ninety-five percent of the time it's going to be, we're on the same page and it's just a matter of keeping a. Representative party, in that case, the, the body having, making sure that their independent counsel is informed.
Well, and I agree Fred, I think it would strengthen the whole legal position of the city and, and, and maybe for the first six months or year, we try it with, if it works, if it's something that's fluid, it's. You know, we're really getting used out of it, we'll do it. No, no harm in trying it.
And, or, or whether it's by ordinance or, or guideline, you know. An amendment to the council handbook or however you want to do it. It, yeah, it can be amended and it probably will be.
Important to remind people, especially if there's a split in. Legal opinions that the city solicitor.
Yes, we're going to come across things that we're not going to be able to prepare for because it's one of those things you don't know what to expect until it happens.
We love lawyers. Lucy, go ahead.
Yeah, the other piece of that is I don't want to miss the opportunity if it's presenting itself. To have the council solicitor help alleviate some of the heavy workload of the legal department. We've spent a lot of time, you know, talking about how this, you know, position can, you know, help at meetings like we just did. And then in, in times of potential conflict, but you know, there are specific things, you know, that when we talk about earlier in consult to the clerk. You know, and some, you know, I'm just trying to think ahead and think if, if that is part of their general description. You know, to, to be available to have a few hours specifically on council related. Like matters or just general workflow as opposed to just constantly, you know, being alluded to, to conflict ish, you know, resolution. That may help you and your department, Fred, and you know, you have to comment here to say, you know, I would love five more. You know, people on my staff to really effectively, you know, get things done. You know, if that's not the case, tell us, but you know, I see a potential opportunity here with this position.
And I agree, and I'm banking, banking on that somewhat with the law department budget is. To staff accordingly in that we view, I, I view. The part-time council position as a part-time, even though I have no control, very little, if any control over their work. I think they will be doing work that would otherwise come to us and that will free, free up the attorneys we have on staff and, and. Allow us to staff accordingly. And I think. You know, but if it goes the other way, then yeah, I'm going to come back and say, you know, we need more help because this is not. Working that way. And we do need help in the law department because the work is. Doubling or it's, it's becoming more because of this, but I don't think that, that's going to happen. I think what's going to happen is some of the things that. Have been asked of the solicitor, that some of the questions get posed to us are going to be handled by the. By the council solicitor and that'll. Require less attorneys in the law department.
All right. Additional questions on, assuming you done, Marcia, I believe you were next. Yep.
And mine has to do more with the process because I think we're treading into new territory here. I think we need to document. How we make use of the council solicitor and how that impacts on the law department. So that we can have over the first year a track record and then be able to also provide. Training to everyone involved and will be good when the new counselors join us so that we're all on the same page. Because I think this is, like I said, new territory, but I think if we do it right. That being said, as we move into talking about compensation, I think we need to keep that in mind as we make a decision about the salary.
You know, Marcia, I agree. I think we'll put some thought behind workflow. I will talk to Linda. I, I guess we'll make. You know, again, we know anything that's going to take extensive research, the body. Has to concur that it's something we want to research. So four of us have to agree. You know, we can do that in a meeting, we can do that individually over a phone. Once we agree, we'll submit a request and email to the solicitor. With everyone on copy. I would also suggest anybody with under an hour request, if you have an inquiry about something. That you make the inquiry with all members. Copied on the inquiry. So we're all in the response chain. Of that specific question, if there's something confidential. That you at least let the body know that you've inquired on a confidential matter. And it's something under an hour and you're at least aware of it. So, I mean, that, that's going to be my, my protocol request out of the gate. That everybody's on copy on all requests. Meaning the body. And then before any extensive requests go out, we, we have a chance to discuss it. Collectively and agree that that's something we want to pursue. And where we contain costs, we don't have everybody. Having our solicitor go in fifty, you know, extensive directions at the same time. And no one member controls it. The president of the council doesn't squash it. You know what I mean? Four members, if four members have the will to look at something, then that's something we do. So, any other questions on really what is the starting point for us? If not, we'll move on to the compensation piece. Linda, you and I had a chance to review that. I, I believe the, the suggestion was a retainer and then a supplemental. Payout based on amount of workload. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that was based on similarly, this amount of arrangements, right?
Correct. Bethlehem and Scranton.
Bethlehem and Scranton, their arrangement was as follows. I think the, oh, I don't have it on here.
Yeah, both of those solicitors attend all council meetings unless excused. I didn't get the job description for Scranton, but we did for Bethlehem and it's very similar to the one that we put together.
And what were their compensation structures?
Bethlehem is twenty-six thousand per year plus healthcare coverage. And Scranton is forty-six thousand a year with no additional fee or benefits.
And we were looking more towards the twenty-six thousand year plus additional cost.
Correct.
Right?
Correct. And that's what I based the fifty thousand a year that I budgeted.
So I wanted to see if Fred can give us any input on that twenty-six thousand a year plus additional cost thoughts, concerns?
My, my, my guess is you'd probably want to go somewhere in between that. And probably closer to the fifty in terms of this, the. Salary. And I'm not sure what benefits, in fact, particularly the way I think. In terms of both candidates, they might elect to stick with the benefits they currently have with the firms they're with. So the city might see some savings there and it might just end up being. Much more of a salary or stipend or whatever you want to call the. The dollar amount that, that, that I guess a portion of it will be retainer and then there's also the. Extras that would be based on an hourly rate.
Looking more at the retainer than a supplemental hour and the twenty-six was more towards the retainer. Are you saying that's a little low for a.
Yeah, I think so, especially, especially if there's not other, and. I apologize. I thought we, I thought at least at one point there was a discussion that there would be certain. Activities like litigation and other things where a, you know, there would be like an hourly rate kicking that would be above and beyond. The amount of hours that were required for the basic retainer.
So, go ahead, Linda.
Yeah, I based the like twenty to thirty retainer. On the fact that the solicitor wouldn't be attending all the meetings.
Right.
So I would agree, if we're going to require him to attend all the meetings, we need to bump that up some.
Right. Yeah, I would suggest a minimum thirty-six thousand. And then, you know, any work out of the baseline work, you know, review of ordinances, general inquiries, attending the meetings. Would be more supplemental pay. Any response to that from anybody? Johani? All right. So I'm going to ask Linda to put some formulation around that. Linda, I want you to list out the retainer. What we anticipate the duties of the retainer to cover. What the supplemental pay would be, what their, kind of what that rate would be and review it with Fred and get his input.
Okay.
And then maybe next week we can finalize that piece. With the hope, you know, we, we want to get a number in the budget. So we're, we're getting close. You know, to the end of budget season in a couple of weeks. So we want to have that in there. Go ahead, Lucy.
Yeah, Jeff, sorry about that. I think that as, as you formulate, Linda, you know, or as we look at this, we, we should be on the. Cautious side so that. You know, we're not at the full cap. And then as, you know, if we see that we're needing more time, incurring more costs. We have some of that flexibility to do that. You know, if I'm making sense, you know.
Retainer covers.
Exactly. So we're just not at the end, we're not being squeezed. Cause we've seen that in some of the complex structures of some of our other. Boards, authorities and commissions with the solicitor positions that it can occur. Right? And, and we don't want to be up against a wall when we get there if we really need it and be mindful of the taxpayers' dollars.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And I, I think if, 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 Linda, as you formulated, you know, that number might need to changes. As you kind of make the inclusive of the retainer expectations. To give you a better measurement. And that's why I wanted Fred to help you out because his team deals with outside attorneys all the time. So. All right. All right, that covers that subject for today. Appreciate everyone's input. Again, I feel like we're, we're on schedule with this thing. The goal is to get this done for the budget season. It looks like in a week or two, we can finalize the numbers as costs and then get that plugged into our budget, which is important. So I'm glad we are where we're at. If there's nothing else on that matter, I'd like to move on to the agenda and move to the next item, which is. Budget review. Couple items that are needed to be covered this evening. I know, Marcia, you're going to take over this, this section before you do. I. Jamar, I had a chance to speak earlier with Linda. I know you and her were talking about the spreadsheet. Especially in this remote environment. I, I know you got a lot of live feeds that come into it. That may be confidential. So I'm going to try to see if maybe you, Abe and I can, and maybe Marcia can figure out a way that we get an updated. Kind of spreadsheet for each budget discussion so that we're dealing. With the same numbers that you guys are looking at. I know it might be challenging with the existing spreadsheet, but there's, it's got to be some workaround we can figure out. Especially with some of the newer members on the body and the fact that we're remote, it's just challenging. You know, to have a binder that's changed and then. Not have the same information you're looking at. And I know you can understand it. So anything we can do to. To help with that. And, and I also know there's background issues like personal matters that we can't necessarily. Take your existing spreadsheet and flip out. So something maybe you, Abe and I, Marcia could get on a call tomorrow or the following day. But I think it is an issue for people. It would be one thing if we were all in the pen room and you could just put the latest spreadsheet up on the screen. And maybe that's what we need to do here. I don't know if that's our only option, but. We have to figure this out so that people feel a little less confused because it's hard enough to keep. Especially some of the, including myself focused on the numbers. Yet alone some of the newer members. And it's very important for us to have them learning at this time. So I can leave eventually. That's what, that's what I'm thinking, you know, but. So I, I, Jamar, any comments on that? I don't mean to put you on the spot or anything like that, that's for sure.
I have time when you have time, council president. Just quickly. You know, the main things are if I were to send you this spreadsheet in a locked version. Then as you're trying to type in your comments, nothing is going to happen. You won't be able to actually. Write on the spreadsheet, which I think is what some members want to do. The second issue is if I strip out all of the proprietary information, then. You're going to get a lot of error codes when you try to click in sections of the document as well. But if that's what you want, I can certainly accommodate that. You're just going to get a lot of error codes.
I'm sorry, let's walk through it on a separate discussion so we don't try to solve it now. But I, we have to find something that's. Up to minute, if you will, so that we can, we can all be working off. We can all be working off the same numbers, and we're going to be all over the map. And it's important for the newer members to understand it. Lucina, then Marsha, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, you know, I spoke with Marsha a little bit earlier today and and, you know, tomorrow I can respect a hundred percent your process and. You know where you're coming from. So I think that. You know, as long as there there's no way, there's absolutely no way, you know, in any given moment that everything is going to be. You know, in real time, this this is a living document, you know, this is this is working and changing, and we have to recognize that. I mean, it's. It's just about downright impossible, you know, so I I don't want that to be the standard in which we're working towards. But you know, certainly my request earlier to have access to the Excel document. You know, with respect, I can understand why, you know, that that would be challenging. For you. So I think, you know, whatever between Jeff and Marsha. And you, you know, kind of what you work through, you know, we can all be as minimal as possible. To find a way that that works, you know, especially now at the beginning of the process. As I said, we're not having these conversations halfway through. Having gone through the presentations and missing the opportunity of the data or the input and comments that people are sharing. So that's it.
Marsha, it's your meeting. Go ahead.
Okay, and just I'm glad that we're going to be having that meeting to clarify the process. But I want to encourage council members to continue to put their questions in writing, that those questions will be compiled. We won't be answering them. The meeting after they're received, but rather grouping them together. We'll talk about that too with Jamar and Jeff, how we're going to be responding to all the questions. Because some of them come after the department's been presented. So we want to be able to make this time as useful as possible. And to be also to Linda's comment that was made earlier in the meeting. Public comment can occur at any time along the line, and we want to encourage that. But there will be a final budget document with all the updated figures that will be presented before we wrote on the budget. I see that Johani has a question.
Yes. So how, okay, I I just want to understand how we're supposed to process this information if it's not in front of us, if we don't have access to it. How do I read the budget, explore it and have questions if I have? I don't have access to it. So we have to figure this out. And like, we need to figure out how we can get this data to us with or without information. I'm not sure what it is that we're hiding. And I don't know how.
I'm sorry, but.
Why? That's a problem.
I'm sorry, I take exception to the suggestion that anything is hidden.
Yeah, we'll we'll work on a solution, Johani. I agree with, you know, we we need to have the data in front of us. When I when I made reference to. Information that was hidden, it's just. Personnel information. I I think you have some feeding of benefits that goes into the the data. I don't think anybody's hiding anything, but. We want to make sure that we the the data we need to see which are the end products, the fringe benefit costs, et cetera. That's all we need. We need to understand we some of the underlying information that feeds it is not really. You know, relevant to us. And I I I don't know what some of that information may be. But Johani, we're going to get accurate information in front of us. So every time we're looking at the budget. It'll mirror what they're looking at, and you will also be able to look at it, do do some research and. You know, raise more questions as you see necessary. That that is the goal. It's important that these these newer members learn this process because it is a lot of information. And at the same time, we have to manage this process and get through it. So it's a balance, but we'll figure it out. Marsha, your meeting, sorry.
Okay, so I want to be able to turn it over to Jamar. We're working. Off of the budget manual that we received, understanding that no, none of these. Might match exactly. So there will always be differentials because Jamar is keeping an updated spreadsheet based on information. Whereas the printed document was the document that was presented at that time. So Jamar, what tab are we on?
We are on tab twenty two or twenty three. It should, the first page should be sewer fund revenue, Fund Fifty Four.
And by the way, folks, I'm using the. Book that was printed out rather than the Excel spreadsheet. I'm switching back over. Okay, Jamar?
Thank you, Marsha. Stan is with us tonight. I'm going to rely heavily on Stan's expertise to explain these line items. As I don't have a huge deal of familiarity with the sewer and retail funds. Under Fund Fifty Four Revenue. We're projecting twenty eight million, seven hundred seventy seven thousand, one hundred forty dollars in revenue. The largest changes come under bulk sewer from municipalities. There's a decrease of eight hundred four thousand, eight hundred sixty five dollars there. Transfer from fund balance under sewer is seven million, three hundred ninety five thousand, six hundred five dollars. That's a decrease of. Four point seven million over the current year. An increase in industrial waste revenue of one hundred fifty six thousand to produce nine hundred twenty thousand in revenue. Interest on investments continues to decrease based on market projections. At twenty seven thousand, five hundred. Industrial waste testing, seventy four thousand, an increase of twelve thousand over the previous year. Fines projected at fifty one thousand. Other revenues at twenty five hundred. Prescription drug reimbursement at one hundred nine thousand, and then user application fees at twenty four hundred. On the revenue side, I mean, on the expenditure side, apologies, under sewer fund. And please keep in mind, there are a couple of divisions under this section. Biggest fluctuation accounts for salaries. This is going to cover our rank and file ASME staff. Temporary wages saw an increase of ten thousand. Light and power saw an increase of twenty two thousand. Water services saw an increase of one thousand. Skipping down minor capital equipment saw an increase of twenty five, twenty thousand rather. Emergency expenses saw an increase of seventy five thousand. Vehicles saw a decrease of three hundred thousand. Skipping down. Stan, can you just touch on the vehicles which we identified earlier? That was based on the type of vehicles that are being replaced, correct? You're on mute, Stan.
That is correct. We we plan on a year by year basis. This past year of twenty twenty one, we purchased a vacuum truck for five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So that should help our fleet. Along with a larger Ford dump truck. And then into the into the following year, we will not need to make that type of expenditure. And you can see going back in the Europe, in the prior years. What was purchased. So we're trying to make sure we we keep it steady. The years prior, the expenditures. Were were very cyclical, and we would rather keep them rather steady for a budgetary reasons.
The other one we talked about making sure we explained was the emergency expense that had a big jump. You mentioned that was relative to sinkholes.
That is correct. And is everyone will notice, especially the the person on on the call who has a restaurant on. Third and Penn, we've experienced quite a few sinkholes. And we're we have a very heavy carst area, and so we're experiencing that more and more. And just the costs are rising, especially we're seeing that it's becoming an emergency and. We're we're pumping a lot of concrete into the hole. So we we've already expended the the allocated funds currently this year, and we're not in, we're just starting Q four.
I'm so anticipating the trend. We bumped that or we've doubled that line.
And we're and the and the reason we're finding that is we're doing a lot more construction work, which can which. Will disturb the upper boundaries of of the land. Of the the street.
Thank you, Stan. Under Division Forty Four, again, accounting for increase in staff salaries under their contract that was recently negotiated. Overtime is seeing a bump of a hundred thousand dollars. There is a significant decrease under light and power. From one point, one seven million in the current year to nine hundred fifty thousand for next year, a decrease of two hundred and twenty thousand. Stan, can you touch on that one?
Say it again, I'm sorry. I missed.
The light and power decrease as a result of cost savings from the energy study that was completed.
Ah, yes, and we we suspect that even with the new plant operations, we are we are saving light. So there's a lot attributed to the the new. Liquid side of the plan as well. So this was part of the reasoning why. The EPA and Department of Energy are allocating monies to us into, say, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four to lessen costs as well. They can see us trying.
Thank you. Contracted services has a bump of twenty five thousand. And then consulting services has a bump of four hundred and twenty five thousand. Can you touch on that one, please, Stan?
Both of both of them are the same. We're finding that within the operation of the existing plant, the new plant that was built. I guess part of the conversation was we need people, outside contractors, to also help us. You can see in the earlier years where. We were not using them as much. We're going to rely on them and bring it back to the twenty twenty monies. We've already expended the one seventy five in current twenty twenty year, twenty twenty one years.
Thank you, Stan. Legal services saw a decrease of two hundred thousand.
That is correct.
We have a decrease also of two hundred and fifty thousand under fees. These are the landfill tipping fees.
The solids, that is correct.
Other fluctuations, there is an increase of a hundred and fifty thousand for vehicles.
That is correct. We are buying a rubber tire backhoe and a small, smallest truck that helped us in the operations. We are retiring vehicles in the previous operations of the the prior plant.
There's a twenty five thousand bump under lab supplies.
Yes.
There is a two hundred fifty thousand dollar bump on chemical supplies.
That is correct. And that could be well attributed to some of the issues that were in Texas these past few months.
There is a five hundred thousand increase in minor capital equipment.
That is correct. And that is terms of the operations of the plant itself and how we are expensing that through working with Mike Oppenheimer also in terms of how we're doing the. The purchases.
Computers and processors has an increase of a hundred and twenty one thousand.
Yes, that that is part of the ongoing cybersecurity upgrades that were not completed prior to the new plant operation. We are upgrading our SCADA system, which is. A a web-based browser that allows us to remotely access. The operations of various locations to include the pump stations.
Thank you. Div- division. Division forty five covers construction related to the project. As you can see, there are significant decreases. And expenditures as that project nears completion. And the current year budget, we budgeted seven and a half million in twenty twenty two, that's two million, one hundred thousand.
Yes.
Also, under design, current year, we budgeted three hundred fifty thousand. That goes down to two hundred and fifty thousand for next year. Under project construction management from one point, one million in the present year down to six hundred forty thousand for next year.
That is correct.
The the loan payments remain consistent and actually climb by ninety thousand. As we wrap up that project. And then. The rest of the line items there reflect debt service associated with the treatment plant project. Do we have any questions on Fund Fifty Four, please? The sewer fund.
Well, I just want to make a comment. I want to remind everyone that the sewer fund is its own enterprise kind of fund and that all these expenses are covered by the sewer revenues. Only from. The city. Now, this one was. I I was getting confused. One's the city, one's the outside users. As we talk about the the sewer, just remember it's slightly separate from. The general fund, which is the general fund operations of the city. Just important for everyone to understand that we account for the sewer operations. In these specific funds. If I stated something wrong, please correct me.
You are correct, Council President.
Fund Fifty Five, just bear with me one moment, please. They're just out of sequence. Fund Fifty Five is going to be sewer retail.
Jamar, just for people's edification, just to make sure, if you could just do a brief, what is sewer retail? What's that defined as?
Stan, please.
That is the the basic operation of our. Stormwater maintenance.
Thank you, Stan. So under. Sewer retail fund. Again, not a huge deal of changes there on the revenue side, budgeting twenty four million, eight hundred sixty four thousand, three hundred dollars on the revenue side up. Over current year by two hundred and forty seven thousand, forty two dollars. On the expenditure side, we're accounting again for increases for our ASME employees. Overtime is staying flat at twenty thousand. Slight increase in part-time wages. We have a significant increase, two hundred fifty thousand in contracted services. Stan, can you touch on that one?
Yes, so the the original budget from nineteen and the twenty was one point eight five million dollars. The past year's budget, looking at the growth or lack thereof, we thought that one five was a fair number. We're at that point now, and so that's why we are increasing. We are also undertaking some other larger projects in District One at Heritage Park. We had a failure approximately six years ago at the hundred eight ninety six inch outfall. And so we were repairing that and the other systems as well in terms of the stormwater. So that's where the two hundred fifty thousand dollars additional will help us.
We have a decrease in consulting services of fifty thousand dollars. An increase in legal services of fifty thousand to one hundred thousand. We have can be this. The repair supplies for sewer has been decreased by twenty thousand dollars. There's been a slight bump of five thousand and communications equipment to fifteen thousand. Under vehicles, there is a bump of seventy five thousand. Stan, can you touch on that one?
That is just as we're trying to come in line with the pre with prior year's allocation. It's just the costs associated with now buying newer vehicles.
There is an uptick in the expense for retail sanitary treatment for bulk municipalities of six hundred thirty thousand dollars. There is a decrease in the contingency fund. Related to this and. An increase in the carryover to reserve of. Just over five million dollars as well. Stan, can you touch on those two and then?
A- a- as we are winding down the Phase One of the wastewater treatment plant in some of our projects, you can see where our numbers are dropping. Then number two is it's we're trying to keep it somewhat. Consistent with best practices. And there I have to thank the wastewater tree plant, Deb Hogue, Bill, Dave Von Spock, a lot of people have. In the in the union rank and file to spend a lot of time and effort in our systems, along with Bob Gensimer and his crew. They do an outstanding job.
Any questions related to sewer retail? Which also covers our stormwater management. Moving on to solid waste.
What pages are in the manual? The binder.
Solid waste is going to be the next tab, twenty three, page ten. Um, we, we actually haven't made a lot of changes to Fund Fifty-Six. Um, we would actually, uh, request that we put this in the parking lot, um, for later in the budget cycle. Uh, just today, we received the bids back for, um, solid waste disposal. And, um, the law department is still reviewing those along with, uh, Stan. So we really don't have anything, um, update on fifty-six and would request, uh, that we can come back to this.
So we need to reschedule this component then.
Yes, please. If that's okay. Um, wrapping up public works for tonight is, uh, the Shade Tree Fund, Fund Twenty.
Well, Jamar is looking that up. We, for council members, I believe we have two tenths of a mil of our property taxes. I don't know if it's two or three, Linda, uh, that goes into our Shade Tree Fund. Uh, that's approximately, how much a year? Two eighty, three twenty? I forget.
Two hundred fifty-six thousand, Council President, in twenty twenty-two. Um, when you factor in the discounts in the prior year, it is two hundred eighty-six thousand seven hundred sixty. You were actually right.
Yeah, it was pretty close. So those revenues are put aside out of property taxes every year to fund these activities here, and they were earmarked specifically for this. So I'm sorry. I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Yes, sir. The, uh, Shade Tree Fund is projected to produce four hundred nine thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars in revenue. Similar to, uh, um, property taxes, when we account for the increased and accessible taxable revenue, um, it produces an additional five thousand dollars in, um, property tax revenue in twenty twenty-two. Uh, there is also an increase in property tax of the prior year line by three thousand dollars. We have an increase in penalty and interest to be collected of three thousand dollars as well. An increase of two hundred dollars for billing. And then prescription drug reimbursement. Uh, an increase of sixteen hundred and then transfer from fund balance is expected to be a hundred twenty thousand and twenty-four dollars. Um, one item of note, the prescription drug reimbursement. The, I would say between twenty nineteen, uh, during the twenty twenty medical renewal, our insurance broker, um, Tompkins was able to negotiate, um, a discount in our prescription drug costs. Um, that discount was initially a million dollars. Um, and it's projected to grow to a million and a half during the term of their contract. Um, that discount gets portioned out over each department, um, that has staffing. That's why you see this new number popping up of prescription drug reimbursement. We're just accounting for it across all of the departments and funds that have employees attached to them. On the expenditure side, again, accounting for the increase in staff, uh, contractual obligation, um, there's a three thousand dollar increase in overtime, anticipated expenses, a five hundred dollar increase in conference and trainings, um, a five hundred dollar increase in gas. The rest of the expenditure lines remain flat with the exception of pension and, um, social security obligations for an increase in expenditures of ten thousand six hundred forty-eight over the current year. With that, I welcome any questions for the Shade Tree Fund.
I do have several questions. I just want to wait for counsel to anyone at this point. And I can see my whole screen now, so. I want, I can't see a strat.
Excuse me. And at a minimum, as a PDF, I'll be ready to send this document before I leave the office tonight.
Okay. So this will be the, all the, whole updated document then, Jamar?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question about our agreements, uh, with other municipalities regarding, uh, revenue. And I don't know whether this is something we can talk about or whether it's executive session, but I just feel we need to have an update on that.
Yeah, we're still, still in a bit of a holding pattern there, but we could schedule it for an update and about before, before the end of budget season.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, really important because it does, uh, impact on the revenue for the budget. Okay, and the other, there was another question, which I just feel we, uh, can probably address tomorrow, but it was a question about how we calculate fringe benefits. And, uh, I just want, want just an overview of how that's, uh, you mentioned about a change in the prescription drugs. I think it's just, uh, a, a good important point to be able to say what goes into the calculation of fringe benefits and how it differs from employee to employee. Just an overview. We can't get into specific employees because each have their own issues that impact on the calculation of fringe benefits.
I can have that for you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Going once, twice, any other questions? Now we'll be reconvening tomorrow. I just wanted to check, is everyone okay with us meeting on the third floor conference room tomorrow?
There's one, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I will be zooming in late. I, I have a four-thirty meeting, but I will join after.
There's one problem that I have.
Okay.
Since we've been offering the public the ability to come in the pen room and view the meeting, I can't be upstairs in the third floor to connect you to the Zoom and the camera and be downstairs in the pen room at the same time.
So it's really not good timing to be able to plan this then.
Not unless we change the way we're doing things.
Okay, and we can't do that between now and tomorrow night.
So should we just stay Zoom tomorrow then?
Well, consider too, the other side. I've been sitting down here for two and a half months about, and the only time I've ever had someone from the public was the October eleventh.
Right.
Well, they can sit out a whole week when you call me?
No, they can't because I can't be upstairs and connect my laptop to that setup. There's not enough room.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what the intent was, but I, I would suggest keeping things as status quo until we.
Yeah, so the status quo means to keep it a Zoom meeting tomorrow night as well.
I mean, it's unfortunate because I think.
The best we can, yeah.
It's just easier for them to gather.
On updated information that I can follow. Like, I don't care where we have the meeting. I just want to be able to have my material that I can read, that I can have my questions. Like, that's all I care about is with having updated data so that I can follow the meeting. Doesn't matter where I am.
Okay, Johani, if you listened to what Jamar said, he was going to be sending us an updated PDF, uh, at the, uh.
But tomorrow I would like updated before the meeting so that I can be prepared, if that's possible, of course.
Johani, again, what was said is you will be receiving an updated PDF at the conclusion of this meeting. Is that sufficient for you?
Right, I, what I'm saying, and I'll say it again, so that I can be clear. For tomorrow's meeting, I would like an updated PDF or whatever version you want to give me prior to the meeting that and, and prior to, to, yeah, prior to tomorrow's meeting so that I can be prepared.
And maybe we can touch base tomorrow, but Jamar, if we don't get a chance to touch base tomorrow, all the areas that are being covered tomorrow, can they be encapsulated in a PDF and gotten out to everybody? Um, an hour or two prior to the meeting with no changes after they're sent out, just so that we have them to review them.
Okay, so that's what we know is tomorrow we'll be receiving. And Jamar, would you repeat what you said earlier?
Council President, I have highlighted in yellow every change that I have made since we started this process. Those yellow highlights are going to be in, reflected in the PDF that I'm sending right this second.
Yeah, I just, just, but the point is if any changes were to happen between now and two hours before our meeting, if there are any changes, you would resend the PDF, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that way we're looking at up-to-date information. So let, let's send the PDF tonight, out tonight, and let's try to group on a call tomorrow. Marcia, Abe, Jamar.
Okay, fine.
If.
And I'm just checking my email because Jamar said he sent it and I, it's a man of his word, so I'm sure we'll get it.
Jess, can I just make one point? Because I'm, I'm not going to be on this meeting tomorrow, um, but I want to be mindful that, you know, we're, in essence, if, if, if this request is that, uh, Jamar does not touch the budget, uh, two hours prior to our meeting, that's two hours of his work time that he's not able to, uh, work towards, um, the process. So I, I want to be very clear about our requests and, and how they impact, uh, the individuals and the work that they need to do. So.
We're going to go over tomorrow on a call.
Please talk about that tomorrow.
There's a, there are changes after that, and then we'll have to send them out. We're going to make sure everybody has live information. While we're in the same meeting, we're all looking at the same information. We'll work that out tomorrow. But yeah, that's a good one. I don't want to, I don't want it too close up against our meeting where members don't have the information to look at either. So it's a fun one. We'll figure it out tomorrow.
And I just received the email from Jamar. Thank you. I opened it up. It is a PDF with the budget.
So is it, is it that the body does not want any changes made outside of these sessions? I'm slightly confused.
No, no, no.
Like.
We'll go over it tomorrow, Jamar. I don't want to spend time tonight. We, we, we want to make sure that council has up-to-date information in enough time to review it prior to the meeting, especially for the subjects that we're going to cover. So I think if you can give us a PDF and we can get this on a timely basis, right before each budget meeting, um, I think we'll be fine. So we'll go over that tomorrow. We certainly, you can make changes anytime you want. It says, when we're in these meetings, we need to have a, an hour at the minimum or two to look at the updated information. There probably won't be a lot of ongoing changes once you've gotten this initial thrust of them in, but we want to be able to look at the same data you're looking at and, and, and get it in front of the body.
Yes, sir. I sent it.
All right, so we'll just.
Thank you very much, Jamar. If anyone else opens up their inbox, uh, they should have received the updated PDF.
I, I only have the council, uh, I mean, the city email addresses. I don't have any personal addresses. So Linda, if you could send it further, that would be super helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
And I think.
Donna?
And I think we just have to all be cognizant, this, this is not the best way to do it. It's, I appreciate everyone's work. And it's like Jeff said, it's easily easily get distracted. I know all the years that we've done it, it was much easier for us all to be in the same room.
Right.
Screen in front of us. There is something to be said about a congregant setting where we're all looking, thinking and talking about the same thing. And, um, you know, and, and I understand the convenience of Zoom. I, I appreciate that as much as anyone else does, but I can see a difference and I can understand Johani's frustration, um, with this, um, and, and it's nothing negative to Jamar at all because I know he's doing his best work. And it's just, it's just not the best scenario to be, to be talking. I mean, we're talking about ninety-plus million dollar budget, which is serious business to all the taxpayers in the city, to our employees, to, to everyone. And to feel, I don't know if everyone else does, but I feel a bit disjointed from the process, no matter how I try to pay attention to it. And, you know, I'm a veteran of many, 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 many years of this. And I, I just, I just think a, a congregant setting is the best way to handle it. And I, I'm hopeful maybe we can, we can get into some mode of that at some point soon. And I look to direction from Linda, the administration.
And I appreciate your comments. And this, the budget process is never easy, no matter how we go about it. Okay, so this makes it even, adds another wrinkle. So we all have to have our ultimate patience and to be able to thank people for trying to teamwork together and, uh, being able to match up. But there's always room throughout the process for asking, uh, questions. And, and we'll be meeting tomorrow to come up with the best way and being able to let people know. We all want everyone to be able to have access to the best in current information as possible. So, okay, Jeff, I think that's it for the budget. So I, do we want to go over the other items that are on the agenda for tonight?
We do. Uh, the next item is the veterans handicap parking. I know there was an inquiry at a recent meeting by a gentleman. Um, we did say that we would look into it. I've got, um, we did get a response from Fred today, uh, duh, 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 duh. Um, Fred, did you want to give us just a brief overview of your, your understanding and your research? I know we did have some previous guidance from, uh, Tolly Jones, I believe, um, you know, our, our handicap spaces or something that we, uh, we require people to get approved. Unfortunately, nobody's handicap space is their own space. It's something that all handicap, um, residents can use. And sometimes that turns into an issue. Um, so I'll turn it over to, I, I, is Fred the one to speak on this or is it Stan?
We can, I think we both have a, a piece.
Okay.
Uh, but I, I can start off and just explain, uh, you know, first of all, you know, we, I think everybody, uh, you know, on this, uh, Zoom meeting and, and, you know, it, it's kind of a no-brainer. We, we would love to be able to help all veterans and frankly, all disabled people. I think these are two groups of people that everybody wants to do something to help. It's, it's, you know, human nature and uh, unfortunately, you know, we've also spent a lot of our time the last several months talking about parking problems the last several years, frankly, for, it's always an issue. And we've done, we're doing multiple studies that, that relate to parking right now to figure out how we can get anybody to, to have parking in their neighborhoods, particularly in the neighborhoods, you know, uh, in other municipalities, there, there's a lot of new developments where there's driveways and plenty of parking, you know, Reading, it's always going to be a struggle. And unfortunately, um, you know, the way it's, it's set up, you know, we're not, we're, you know, to the extent that we would try to hel- alleviate the burden on some of the veterans out there that have, have suffered some sort of, uh, injury that, that has left them disabled. We, uh, would not be able to do that because each space being, uh, oh, you know, that would take a space that would be only for that one person. Um, and, and particularly unfortunately with the, with the gentleman that was here last week, it's, you know, he, there's, he's not getting it, at my understanding, he's not getting his part, it, it, the space closest to his house taken from, uh, uh, and people that aren't disabled. You know, there, there's multiple disabled people on that block and it's, it's unfortunate. There's two spaces on that block. Uh, I'd asked Charlie and, and Ju- and June, like, is it possible maybe on that block to get more handicap spaces if, if? And even that would be, it would, would just be kind of, um, you know, it'd be like a, uh, bouncing ball. You, you'd be, you know, creating, solving one problem, creating new ones. So it's, I mean, it's nothing, the, the gentleman, you know, I felt his, you know, I, I, I felt for that man who spoke to us last week. I think we all did. Uh, but, uh, the issue becomes, and this is where the legal ramifications come in, is that we would potentially expose ourselves uh, to liability under the Americans with Disabilities Act because, you know, we, we do have a, the reason we have these spaces is we have a responsibility to provide reasonable accommodations to, uh, individuals with a disability. And to the extent that we would be creating a space for a specific individual, for that one person, we'd solve his problem, but we would have, uh, you know, um, be creating potentially liability for the other people that, that have the permit, that, that have gone to the state, have gotten their, have qualified because of their disability. Um, and, you know, i- it just becomes too much of a hassle. And, you know, with, with this gentleman's one who raised it, but we open the door, there's lots of veterans in, that live in Reading. And, you know, every, potentially on, not, maybe not every block, but there might be box, one, a block with ten veterans. So it, you know, I, I think I speak for everyone when I say we want to help that individual and help all veterans, want to help all disabled people, want to help all people in Reading, uh, have a parking spot. But, uh, the, the, you know, I mean, there may be a way to do that. I just want to be clear. And I, I stated that in my response this afternoon. There, it's, it, you know, it's, but it would take a lot of work. We'd really have to dig deep. There, it's, you know, but it would take a lot of work. We'd really have to dig deep, maybe probably do a whole nother study, and we just did a couple that would look at, you know, do surveys of how many veterans are out there, how many disabled people are out there, how many spaces are available in each neighborhood, and then see if it's feasible. And the other thing is, we did a look around, and I, you know, I think the idea came from some of the big box stores and other retailers that have private lots have made these accommodations. There's also accommodations for expecting mothers and other things that you don't see on the streets, and they have a cer, I mean, you pull into a Target, there's usually, I mean, it's not like you can always get a good parking spot, but there's parking somewhere, and in Reading, there's not. There's, you're parking five blocks away coming home from work. So, it's a different situation. We'd love to be able to offer something like that. The question is, is it feasible and would it not create liability?
Alright, thank you, Fred. Any comments? Go ahead, Donna.
Yeah, this block is in my district, and I think most of you guys know it pretty well. It is a very densely lived-in block, very, you know, tight row homes, not small rows, but, you know, significant, many of them are multi-units, going back to the issue of the conversions of them. This is a gentleman who's lived there many, many years, probably has seen not only just the conversions to multi-units, but the multiple cars that come, even with single-family houses. It's exacerbated by the numbers of cars for all the folks that live there. Um, I have not gone through the alley, the rear of his property, and I need to do that because if there's a chance there could be off-street parking for him, we might be able to reach out to the veterans group through the county, through Ken Lebron, and see if there could be some kind of, and this would have to be a different kind of intervention. It wouldn't be a city intervention, but perhaps working with the veterans, there might be a way to help create an off-street parking space for him to the rear. Again, I know the area well. I haven't driven down that alley to see if it's wide enough, if it's in good enough shape. Many of our alleys have issues, but that might be an alternative that we can look at that might help solve the problem for him. There is a parking lot nearby at Hope with Church. I could speak with the pastor there to see if there's something that could be done. That's not real far from his, from his home, but it's certainly not in front of his home. Those are only, and this is specific to that issue, if either of those would be alternatives to, you know, to ease his situation a bit, but again, that doesn't answer the question. And thank you, Fred. You did a really good job summarizing that, both emotionally and legally. It doesn't solve the issue of having that parking space freed in front of his home. And again, driving on that street, seeing where he lives, seeing, you know, it's right near the corner of Front and Greenwich. Just an extremely heavily used area with the Dago, with another business at the corner, multiple businesses along the road. It's a challenge. It's a challenge.
Alright, let's go ahead, Marsha.
Okay, and thank you, Fred, for your research on this, and I think we have to be cautious. It's great to be able to, and I commend for trying to address an individual situation, but then as you try to apply it to the whole city, everyone's not going to have those same opportunities to be able to park off-street. I look at where I'm at, which is very densely populated and has the advantage of having a park across the street, and there still wouldn't be a room. If everyone who I believe in our area is, would be able to secure a handicap spot, there would be no room for other people to park. And so, I don't know that there's ever going to be a simple solution to this. I think the issue is, as we're looking at deconversion, and also, and I don't know whether this is possible, to decrease the number of cars allowed into the city as far as how many cars you're allowed per household. Because that's part of the problem, and I know I'm opening up a Pandora's Park when I say this, but the reality is people are having like three cars per row home, and it just doesn't work. And then you have veterans and people that are handicapped that want closer. I constantly am explaining to people, just because you have a handicap permit doesn't mean you have permission for the handicap spot in front of your house. Another person with a handicap permit could park there. So, the same thing would happen with the veteran situation. There's no easy answer. It's just the overall, what we're going to be doing with parking in the city.
Yeah, go ahead, Marsha. I mean, Donna.
Donna?
Uh-oh, he's mixing us up. Even in our neighborhood, which is sort of polar opposite of Marshes in terms of density and things like that, we do have on Lehigh Street a property where they have eight cars, eight vehicles to one house, to a single-family house. And in addition, trailers with jet skis and things on. And we have a lot of parking, but you can imagine the people in that neighborhood are a little distressed that there is one house with eight vehicles. So, imagine if that particular family lived in a more densely populated, I can't imagine how that would be, but it just goes to show that, you know, there are so many people that have, for whatever reasons, they collect cars, whatever, that the proliferation of licensed vehicles, and they're all licensed, they're all up to date on the street is pretty significant. And then think of the ones that aren't. But again, going back to this particular issue, I don't see what the true resolution can be that would make the home, this particular homeowner, you know, feel good about his situation. It's just, it's just, we're following the law, and it's it's just not going to be a resolution that's going to be a happy one for this individual.
Alright, are there any other comments on this issue? We just wanted to make sure we got a response. We've reviewed it, and we've got an understanding of it. I wanted to make sure, we did tell the gentleman we would do that, so we've done that. And we'll just try to forward some sense of response to him.
Are we going to be sending a letter or any correspondence to the gentleman so that we have the curse, that we can have the courtesy of a response to him? Fred, could you do that with?
Stand up. Go ahead, Stan.
I have spoken to his daughter on an occasion, and Tammy has also spoken to her twice. So, we have been in contact, and they do have letters in hand of what the city's policy is already.
And if you want me to be involved in any of those conversations, let me know, and I can meet you out there.
Yeah, we are, we actually concluded them, and this was, this would have been within their appeal process itself if there is such an animal, but yes, we have been in contact with them.
And our office was in contact with them back in May-June.
Yes.
And provided the same answer.
Yes, thanks, Linda. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Everyone's tried.
Yeah.
Alright, if there's no other comments on that topic, I want to move on to the final topic. The redistricting commission?
Commission.
I don't know why I'm getting an echo all of a sudden, but I am. Anyway, I know I did submit it to Linda. I believe somebody else did. We still have a few names. Let's try to shoot by the end of this week, Friday at the latest. And Linda, I'm going to ask you to give everybody a call who hasn't responded by Thursday and give them six hours. If that's fair. I know it's not at the top of everyone's list, but something, we do need to try to get, we do have to get this started. So, everyone should try to get a name to Linda by the, if somebody doesn't have it, ask other members. Or some ideas. Go ahead, Lucy.
So, what actually happens if we do not have a representative from each district? You know, are we then able to assign at large, or how does that work?
I don't know that we've ever crossed that bridge, because we should be able to find at least one representative from each district. I'm not saying we will, but we should, but I don't think we've ever crossed that bridge, have we, Linda?
No.
So, it's a legal question.
Yeah, I think we're required by district.
We are.
Lucy, and I might have a suggestion or two for your district, if it'll pan out, but I'll send you a note.
And Linda, you received mine, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions around the redistricting commission? If not, is there any other business for public discussion this evening before we adjourn our meeting? Marsha, then Donna.
Okay, and this, I'm just going to try to lighten things up a little bit, but Jess found out our friend Lynn Dotage, who won the Pulitzer Prizes. Her next play is now on Broadway. It's about a sandwich shop sort of centered on Reading called Clyde's. So, guess what, guys? I think we're going to need to be able to let, show Lynn some love, and maybe look at how we can visit her show on Broadway.
Yeah, good idea. Good idea. I wonder if it's Mike's Sandwich Shop or Tax or which?
Actually, I don't know. By the way, Tax's sign is now down, disappointment due to Reading, but I think it's gone.
Or Scrupse's.
Who knows?
Gone. We can have competing district sandwich shops.
Yeah.
Okay, Donna, you had to come in.
I nominate Mike's. Anyhow, I I guess there was some consternation on my part and others regarding an event that occurred in Reading on Saturday afternoon regarding candidacy, statewide candidacy. My concern was strong about the use of city property. The clarification is, and thank you, Fred, is that political uses are fine for parkland, things like that. My understanding, though, as I read the ordinance, and I have the ordinance up, I find it, an ordinance we passed in 2016, that there probably should have been a rental and permit paid for use of a city pavilion on parkland that would go through the Reading Recreation Commission. My concern is this, and, you know, freedom of speech, heck yeah, freedom of the press. I've lived my life that way, but I just want to make sure this, we go into very, we're already in contentious times with politics, which is unfortunate. But as we go into especially 2022, 2024, which will be very contentious years on the state and federal levels, that we welcome people, we welcome to hear their ideas, but we ask that they follow protocol. They contacted the correct office, the mayor's office, the recreation commission, that everyone is treated the same, because in this particular case, pavilion was used. I believe looking at the fees that we approved back in 2016, there would have been a hundred-dollar rental for that. I think when we are still charging nonprofits and other entities, the very least, any political campaign coming in of any ilk should be following that protocol, and out of respect, you know, we should, we should expect the same permitting process and fee collection as we expect of our local nonprofits. Again, everybody have the same chance. Everybody speak their piece, but please, please follow protocol in whatever we can do. And I understand, and I saw, I believe, Fred, you mentioned it in your email, that there is a work group together, so whatever that group can do, and then with Christian putting forward the information, trying to get it out to everyone, and maybe even when you know who different candidates are, just sending it to their candidate, you know, candidate emails or campaigns or whatever, just to, you know, I think in this particular candidate's point, this was sort of in the weeds, so to speak. I'm not sure that person even realized there were any issues. I did because I was on site, and maybe I'm just hypersensitive over the years, what we have seen with ethical problems and lack of following protocol. I was very sensitive to what was happening there. So, again, if I've screwed up, every, you know, good intentions lead us down, sometimes difficult roads, and it was certainly never to malign the candidate or the campaign, but it was to make sure that we treat people properly, and everyone, everyone falls apart probably for you too. So, I hope it goes forward. That will be the case. I hope no one looks at this as precedent that use of city pavilions are free, and that we make very clear, very clear, and Fred, I look to you in the work group to clarify what the situation is of use of these facilities.
Alright, are there any comments for public discussion? Go ahead, Marsha.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, because it is an issue, not so much what you put out, but the whole use of the public parks and such has been discussed at rec commission meetings. And one of the points is that they are granted, but there's also times that people decide that they're going to be using them, and there's never really any acknowledgement that they may have been rented out, so that we need to come up with a clear process so that we know each of the pavilions may be rented out for a particular group, for a particular purpose that's been approved by the rec commission, and the other people then, and I had it happening across the street from my house, the playground where people have sort of set up baby showers, whatever, great intentions, great events, but they've never really checked with anyone to see if the facility is available. So, I'm glad the work group's been set up. I think, you know, we can get some clarity to this.
Yeah, I do believe that most of the rental is really kind of a reservation. If you don't rent it and it's available, you know, then you're free to use it. If somebody has a permit, well, then they have essentially reserved it. So, we'll let that group figure that out. Again, in this specific case, I don't think anybody meant any harm. And, you know, sometimes not everyone knows all the information, so we'll, hopefully, we'll improve our internal process and make it more well-known to people. Are there any additional comments for tonight's meeting? Go ahead, Lucy.
Just on that, I was at Schlegel Park last week, and, you know, we were looking at the fieldhouse, and I think it's really important when the group starts to work on this to address to the public, why, you know, why do we have permits and why do we have fees? And so, when you go to Schlegel Park and you look up and you think, oh, it really could probably use a new paint, you know, job, and would be nice to redo those letters or to see some better lighting here, or, you know, that's where, when we pay these permitting fees to use these public spaces, then that can be turned around to improve our facilities and to improve our parks, you know, and I think that messaging needs to be clear, so that everybody feels that they, you know, in doing their part, are investing in what they want to enjoy and celebrate.
Alright, any other topics this evening before we make a motion to adjourn? Okay, if there's no other comments, we are formally adjourned. We will see everybody tomorrow evening. Thank you.